Okay, I'm now recording.
All right, we'll call the order. The planning commission meeting Wednesday, April 7th, 2021 at 7:07 PM. Can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Drat.
Here.
Mr. Kinsley.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
And then looking for an approval of the agenda.
I'm.
I'll move.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I moved to approve the agenda of, I don't know the date, last meeting.
It'll be at this meeting, of the approval of the agenda.
Oh, the agenda, okay. I approved the agenda for April 7th, 2021.
Do you have a first? Do I have a second?
A second, yes, second.
Got a first and second, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
It passes. Now looking for an approval of the minutes for March 3rd, 2021?
I'll move approval.
And I'll second.
A first and a second, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. I don't have anything on the agenda for old business, so new business. The first order will be review and render a decision on a variance of land use application 2021-03 to the front yard setback for lots 47, 47, sorry, 45, 47, 49, and 51 of the Sunridge Second Edition subdivision. Henry?
Thank you, Lon. Jeremy, do you mind making, I know I wasn't going to share anything, but do you mind making me the co-host? I do just want to put up the site plan so everybody can see the properties that we're talking about. If that doesn't work, it's on page 20 of 90 of the packet.
You should be able to share now.
Okay.
Well, let's see. So far, not yet.
Here we go.
Henry, you said 20 of 90?
Yep, it's sorry, I got it up now. If you can see it, it's the variance site map, it shows the properties.
Yep.
Okay, so this one will be pretty brief. The applicant is requesting a variance of the front yard setback. Normally, it's 10 feet, they're requesting to bring it down to five feet. This would allow for a less steep driveway to be built, and it would limit further cutting into the hillside by locating the home site closer to the road. The city engineer and I have both looked after requests. We don't have any issues with it, and we find it can be approved. However, planning commission has the ability to find alternate findings if they don't agree with the staff report or the findings contained therein. That's all I have to say on this one. As you can see, the properties are 586, 598, 614, and 622 of Sunridge Lane. I'll turn it over for any questions, and the applicant may also want to elaborate on their proposal, which they'll have the opportunity to do so.
My only question for Henry would, sorry, would be, is there any detriment to not approving this variance? I would think that it's beneficial to us to not have to cut into the side of that hill any more than already needed to develop those lots?
Sure, sure, that's a valid reason. I wouldn't, I can't think of an actual detriment. If it got denied, the applicant would just have to conform to the standards of 10 feet. That's essentially what it comes down to. So yeah, you could think of it as a benefit for not cutting into the hillside further. That is an argument and a finding made in the staff report, as you've seen.
One positive to this, though, is not having a steep driveway. It's going to be downhill into the homes, and if we have icy weather up there trying to go down into those steeper driveways or coming out, can cause risk to the homeowner also.
What is currently happening up there for erosion? Are these lots 45 through 51, these four that are in question, do they have any sort of barrier? Or is there a retaining wall or anything like that that's required of them?
I'm not going to, I think the best person to answer that would be Mia Nelson, the property owner of the subdivision, and possibly the property owner of one of the lots. So I'll let her answer those if she has any information to provide.
Do you want me to answer her or wait till everyone is done and then give a presentation?
Yeah, good question, Mia. Let's wrap up staff presentation portion, and then we'll move into applicant presentation and question and answer. So Lon will turn it back over to you if there are more questions.
I just want to confirm, we don't have any more questions for Henry?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Mia, if you wouldn't mind, just go ahead and answering that question for us, and we'll open up.
Yeah, I will answer the question. Before I, before I do, though, I wanted to ask, Henry, is it possible for me to share my screen?
Yes, I'm going to stop sharing now, and Jeremy, you maybe give Mia control if you can do that.
I think it's going to let me, I just tried it.
Oh, oh, sure, there you go.
This is supposed to be easier because I can explain, and I will be sure to answer your question while I.
Okay.
So, so Dan, who's on the call, Dan Fisher, he bought from me lots 49 and 51 a while back, like after I applied for this, but I applied for this variance for him. We were already, had made a deal for him to buy these two lots. And so I'm just seeing this through so that he can build the house he wants to build, but this blue is the roof line of the house, though. He's actually going to combine these into one lot or do a lot line adjustment to make sure the house is on one lot. And this up here, I hope you can see my cursor moving, this is his driveway where he'd come in like this and come into a garage here. And it's impossible to tell from a flat piece of paper, but this hill is quite steep. And if he has to move, if he has to conform with the 10 foot sub, it just means he has to move that house farther down the hill. And, but the house has to stay pretty much either stay the same height, which makes there be, it makes forces him farther down the hill and makes there have to be a big fill bank down here. Or he has to lower the house, which as Lon was talking about, that makes his driveway steeper, quite a bit steeper. So we're asking for this, and this actually is something I probably should have asked for a variance for every lot on the downhill side of Sunridge Lane when we first did the subdivision, because this keeps coming up. And three of the five houses that have already been built on the downhill side of Sunridge have already gotten this kind of a variance, including the mayor's house and the former mayor's house, for the very same reasons. And I want to show you why. This is in your packet. So this with the red circle, this is, I hope you can see this. Did I succeed in zooming that for you? I can't tell.
Yes, that looks like very nice.
Close up of Sunridge Lane, and what I want to show you is here, these heavy dash lines are the right of way. It's a 50-foot right of way, but see how the street is shoved to this, to one side? It's not centered in the right of way. It's off to the north, and it's also only 21 feet wide with a sidewalk on one side. Normally, the sidewalks are 28 feet with sidewalks on both sides, and they're centered in the right of way. We had to do this for topographic reasons, but what it means is there's actually 29 and a half feet from the center line to this right of way, but there's only 20 feet from the center line to the other right of way. So what that means is, if we look at, this is from my statement here. This is my drawing of what a normal street is like. With a 10-foot setback here, the house is 21 feet back from the street. With Sunridge Lane, even with a five-foot setback, which is what I'm asking for, you're 24 feet back.
Okay.
And if we stick with 10, we're actually going to be 29 feet back, so it's eight, it would be eight feet farther away from the street than it would with a normal street, and that's what's driving this, and the fact that it's a hill makes it even worse. So that is why we're asking for this, and I just went ahead and asked for the other two lots that I still own. I asked for a variance on those two just in anticipation to spare all of us from you having to do this again. But I know that Dan needs this in order to build the house that he wants to build. So as to the question about erosion, I think, I invite you to drive up there and see, we have done a great job of controlling erosion, and we re-vegetate very aggressively, and it's, I have a photo here of the lot, this is the lot right here. This is looking at it from the side. This is in your packet.
I think at one point you had goats on this, right?
Yeah, we still do, yeah, we.
Okay.
Well, I can't now that it's sold to Dan, but I put them up there just to control weeds.
Right, they're great for that, I love it.
Yeah, but this is what it looks like, and it's, it's very well vegetated, and we have a lot of requirements in our CCNRs about revegetation and erosion control, and I think we've done a really great job with that. I'm not aware of any erosion problems at all.
Okay.
I don't, does that answer your questions about?
It does. I mean, I know that the earth moves no matter what, and we have clay, and when it's wet, it just does its thing. But, you know, we're putting houses on top of a very steep slope and.
Yeah, we've got a lot of geotechnical work done and a lot of the, it has to be well, there is a lot of drainage structures. Like, you can't see, but in this road, there's all these sub drains underneath the pavement with gravel drains that take water away.
That's great, thanks, Mia. It's good to know, walking into the middle of a development like this, I don't know what infrastructure was put in place to be in with.
Um, Dan may have, it's this little weird because Dan and I are both like co-owners of the same application now, so he owns these two lots, actually, and I think that has something to say also. Are you still on the call, Dan? Who was?
Yeah, I am, thank you. You know, I've seen these things that Mia is showing, and with my designer, he's telling me the same things as well, that having that five foot makes things much easier for everything to go and allows me to do what I'm trying to do with the house itself. So especially with the driveway, as you've been talking about, and what would cause me to maybe dig into the bank that I would otherwise not have to do. So I would appreciate your cooperation and help on this.
Thank you, both of you. Any of the commissioners have any other questions?
I do. Given the fact that there isn't a lot of traffic up there, and the other houses are closer to the road, has anybody voiced any concerns about noise or possible, say, on an icy day, somebody coming too close to their house?
You mean with the ones that already have this variance?
Yes.
Well, see, they're actually a lot farther away, even with the variance. They're 24 feet from the street, and they would be 21. Everybody else in Lowell is, you know, 21 feet away from the street with a 10-foot setback. So they don't seem close. If you go up there, they, they actually seem quite far from the street. You know, I think we're just trying to claw our way back to, you know, getting closer than 29 feet away.
I travel up here at least once a week, and, I mean, the traffic is slow enough that I don't think that there's been any complaints about anybody seeming to come close to homes or anything.
Okay.
Mary, if you look at this photo that I have up, so this red line right here, the leftmost red line, that's the right of way. So just for perspective, this, this box, it says slope easement, that's 10 feet wide. So the house could conceivably go sort of right where I'm moving the cursor, right in the middle of this box. With, with the variance, without it, it'd be back in this area in here.
Oh.
That's, that's, but you can see, this is the street way over here.
Okay.
We're still going to be way, it's going to seem like far enough.
Okay, is that house that's in the picture, is that set 10 feet or is?
Well, that's different, that's on a one acre lot, so they're, they're, that's different, it's not part of Sunridge, that was there before.
Okay.
So they have this really long driveway that comes down, and they're, you, it's, it's kind of not the same because they're in a one acre lot. These lots are, you know, 7,000 square feet range of lot.
Mia, I have one last question, and this is just, is the homeowner going to be responsible for taking care of this right of way that is shown here where it says Sunridge Row?
That's the way it is everywhere in Lowell is, I mean, I think you're expected.
Yeah.
Oh, and.
Right.
Yeah.
Just because.
Right of way at all, it's just.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, their front yard's only going to be five feet, I would think that.
Oh, no, they have to have a sidewalk, you don't get off.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate your presentation and the information. I'm, I'm good.
Do we have any other questions for the applicants? Okay, then, any discussion for us or a motion for?
Lon, if I may have you back up, so we can consider the applicant presentation finished. You may want to ask if there's anyone else on the line that wants to speak in favor and then in opposition of the proposal.
Copy, we'll do that.
Basically, continue the public hearing.
Did we physically start a public hearing?
I don't think we did.
You know, if you, if you haven't, just go back to your script and read those required recitals for the public hearing.
I will do that, bye-bye. Okay, so now would be the time for public testimony. Are there any members of the audience who wish to speak in favor of this proposal?
And you may just want to say the applicant spoke, gave their presentation, and the property owner spoke and gave their presentation.
So said as Henry just said.
Sure.
Okay, not hearing anybody speaking, are there any members of the audience who wish to speak against the proposal? Hearing none, does either applicant have any further comments? Hearing none, there's no further testimony, the public hearing on this case is now closed, and then look at the pleasure of the commission for discussion, decision.
I'd like to move approval of the land use application number 20,200, no, 2021-03 to the front yard setbacks of lots 45, 47, 49, and 51, Sunridge Second Edition subdivision. Is that right?
Sounds good.
Okay. And I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Okay, next, Lon, we're essentially going to hold another public hearing because we have two separate land use applications. And Mia, just, I would just keep this picture up, it's pretty good, it talks about the slope easement that we're going to be talking about here. So Lon, why don't you go ahead and start the next public hearing for the vacation and go through your script again, please.
Okay, so the next public hearing will start at 7:25. So this hearing is now open for the purpose of considering reviewing and issue a recommendation to city council on land use application 2021-04 regarding a request to vacate a slope easement that is recorded on the plat of the Second Edition Sunridge subdivision. So tonight, we'd like to follow staff report, questions from the planning commission, applicant presentation, public testimony, general public comments, and then any applicant rebuttal. Does any commission member wish to disqualify him or herself for any personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight?
No, none.
Does any commission member wish to report any significant ex parte or pre-hearing contacts?
No, none.
Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of commission or hear this matter? Hearing none, is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of the city council in this matter? Hearing none, Oregon land use laws require that all issues be raised, if the issues are to be appealed. Failure to raise the issues at this hearing may validate their further appeal. Will the staff please present their report? Think we lost Henry.
Okay, I'm here. So the next application we're going to talk about is a vacation of a slope easement. It is located at the northern boundary of 922, or excuse me, 622 Sunridge Lane, tax lot 4900, also lot known as lot 49 and 51 of the Sunridge Second Edition. In, I'm going to give a brief overview of what a slope easement is, and then talk about some of the things that were brought up between the city and the city engineer and the applicant. In general, a slope easement exists to main slope stability and prevent erosion, and also to prevent structures from being placed in them. As you see in your packets, the city engineer initially had some concerns that were raised, but the applicant submitted additional evidence in, in the, in, via, which was photographs of the lot, in fact, it's this photograph right here you see, showing the actual slope in question. And you'll see that it's relatively gentle, and based on this new evidence and these photos, and the fact that slopes in this case are often softened during construction or after construction, and the slopes are flatter than required, the city engineer had no further issues and supports the requested vacation of the slope easement. I'll note, a vacation of an easement, or the slope easement, is recorded on a plat, and per the Lowell Development Code, the process that we're going to follow tonight is planning commission can only issue a recommendation for approval or denial, and that will go on to city council for final action, and they will adopt it via ordinance. And ultimately, the applicant will have to record this vacation at Lane County deeds and records. And as you see in your packet, we recommended two conditions of approval. The first one, the subject property is, does contain steep slopes. So will any development on it, on the property will have to comply with the hillside development standards. And then the second condition is the applicant needing to submit that vacation at Lane County for recording. That's all I have to say on this one. I'll turn it back over to you, Lon.
Thank you, Henry. Are there any questions from the commission to Henry?
None at this time.
Okay, is the applicant representative present?
Yeah, it's me again.
Thank you, Mia. Would you wish to add anything to the staff report?
Yeah, sure, I'll just briefly follow up here. So this, this is all in your packet, but this is a close-up of the recorded plat for Sunridge. And I want to show you, just see this dash line where it says 10-foot slope easement. This actually goes all the way around like this. We're just asking for this part to be vacated right here, the hash part, the dark hash. And I want to tell you why we have a slope easement, because it was really unusual thing that happened. When we did this phase of Sunridge, normally, the city demands that you put the street in before you get to have your lots created. We did it backwards. We asked the city to allow us to actually plat the lots before we had turned a shovel. And we had to sign an agreement promising that we would do that. But they, you know, it's always possible that we, you know, would fail, and the city would have to come in and build the street themselves. And for that reason, the city engineer, this is a close-up, this is in your plans too, this was a close-up of the plans approved in 2007 by the city engineer, Ron Rice. He required this slope easement because, I don't know if this makes a lot of sense to you, but these little lines here, right where I'm moving my cursor, that shows, that is fill. It's showing dirt added to the ground outside the right of way, which is this line right here. And the reason the city, he asked us to make this easement so that if we, if the city had to later come in and build this road, they had the legal right to enter onto these lots to place fill. That's why. And this would have been, you know, I didn't think twice about giving this easement because who cares, the setback is 10 feet anyway. It wasn't until Dan asked for this, you know, the need, needing the setback variance. I was like, great, all you need is a setback variance, but then I looked at the plat, and then I remembered, oh, you know, because this was 14 years ago. Oh, shoot, we have a slope easement here. So the reason we're here before you is because that variance that you just granted, he can't use that if the slope easement isn't, doesn't go away also. You may wonder, well, why in the world would the city want to let go of the slope easement when the city engineer said he wanted it? It's because it's unnecessary now that the road is built, and I just want to show you. So yes, this is the, this is the slope easement right here, not very steep. I want to show you, though, this is just up the hill, here's First Street. This was built before we got platted, and they, he didn't ask for a slope easement. Here's the right of way now, this is way steeper, so there's no slope easement on this part here, but nobody cares because the street is built. Does that make sense? It's not routine in Lowell that every place there's a hill next to a street, the city needs a slope easement. It's not, you can't just go and dig up a city street. You know, the property owner, I guess, could, but I think it would be actionable if the city, any of these streets, if the city's road was undermined by an adjacent property owner. It's, it would be the same here as anywhere, you just can't do that. So that's why we're asking for this, and yes, the city engineer, as Henry said, he, at first, he was like, wow, what if it's very steep? You know, what if we need that easement? When I showed this photo to him of how it actually is, he wasn't concerned anymore. And that's all I have on this.
Thank you, Mia. Does the commission have any questions of the applicant?
No, I think at this time it was very clear.
Okay, then now would be the time for any public testimony. Are there any members of the audience who want to speak in favor of this proposal?
Yeah, well, as Mia was saying, you know, for the build to happen, this does need to be part of it. So I, again, would really appreciate your help in allowing this to happen for me. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other members in favor. Are there any members of the audience who wish to speak against the proposal? Does the applicant have any further comments?
I always get that wrong.
There's no further testimony, the public hearing is now closed, and I'll be looking to the commission for discussion, decision.
I don't have any discussion.
No discussion.
Okay, then I would be looking for a motion to recommend to the city council for approval regarding land use application 2021-04.
So move.
With conditions as stated. I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion to recommend to city council application 20-21-04 with the exceptions that are added and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state aye.
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 And any opposed?
No.
Which has passed.
All right.
Thank you, Lon.
So Henry, one thing, though, real quick, and while Mia and Dan are still on there, I think just for the city side of it, just to make sure that there is an understanding that while we did approve the first, the first section that this is based on city council now approving it, and if they don't, then that'll be another.
Correct. Correct, the, yeah, I know that they go hand in hand. The variance technically is approved by planning commission, the vacation, however, has to go to city council, and they can, they can. The vacation, however, has to go to city council, and they can, they can find alternatives from you. They can, they can overturn your recommendation or essentially not accept it. But yeah, that's correct. And a note for Jeremy, I will be sending Jeremy some documents in the morning for Lon to sign these recommendations and approval, and we can get that into the record. And we'll get the notice of decision going as well.
Thank you, Henry. Any other business tonight? Having none, looks like we will adjourn at 7:37. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.